Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before we start this meeting, I'd just like to make a couple announcements. Number one, our chairman, Mr. Bruce Bracker, will not be with us in person. He's on via phone, is he?
Yes, sir.
Great. Good morning, Bruce. So I will be running the meeting for you guys today. It's an honor. Just one thing we ask is that you please place your phones on vibrate or shut them off. Otherwise Supervisor Reese will stamp you with a free lunch for us. And that is all I have. At this moment, I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll, the Honorable Superintendent Velasquez, lead us in the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item B, adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager, good morning.
Good morning.
Is everything in order?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to-
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda and allow Chair to deviate as necessary.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Item C, call to the public. I have two speaker slips. One is Jay Cook with the Arizona Game and Fish. Good morning, Jay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jay Cook. I'm with the Arizona Game and Fish Department. And I did want to come today in person and invite you to the Arizona Game and Fish Commission meeting that is being held next Friday in Sonoyta at the fairgrounds. Part of my job, I do community engagement and government affairs. I'm trying to get out in all the counties and towns throughout the state of Arizona to, A, let everyone know that we're here and what we do. And in the future, we definitely want to work with different counties and cities and towns, particularly in some of the more rural communities that we believe is a little bit underserved. So anyway, it's a cordial invitation for the board to attend the meeting. We will probably have like a social event the evening before in Sonoyta. So those details I'll send to the clerk or the manager, whoever you prefer. And then I hopefully will be back at a later date and I potentially could get an agenda item and give you more information on what we're doing throughout the state.
Right.
Any questions?
Thank you. No, is it this Friday?
The 13th.
Ooh.
And it is short notice, but-
That's okay. Thank you for the invitation. And one thing I'd like to do is I know we used to host an annual fishing event and after COVID hit, we kind of got off of it and we'd like to get with you guys and schedule those, get them going again. Those are awesome events.
Definitely. And I'll relay that to our Region Five Supervisor down in Tucson. He's worked with you guys before, so I'll definitely pass along the message and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have the Honorable Alfredo Velasquez. Morning, sir.
Good morning. I gotta sit closer to the mic there, Alfredo. See, you're struggling getting up. That's because we care about you, that's why.
Yes, I know, I know.
It's not a criticism.
Mr. Collier, Chairman, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Reese, members of the community and of course our administration here, thank you so much, Kimberly, Jennifer and Mauricio. I want to highlight Chris's attendance of the ACO-sponsored professional development academy leadership program that he went through. I know that others did too. And I know that Ms. St. John did send out an email and so I don't want to, but I want to recognize him anyways because I don't want to just leave him out. It's Nora Herrera and David Marast and I, you know, Sema Alvera. But I'd like to congratulate Chris for taking on this commitment and going through it and successfully completing it. And so I'd like to call him up and give him his certificate. And have him say a couple of words before, Mr. Jacob, we'd like to also meet with you sometime through our office as Supervisor Malera said about the fishing and a couple of other things. Congratulations.
Thank you, Supervisors, community. Jen, thank you for this opportunity to take this course. It's 12 weeks. Learned quite, I'm sure some of you have already gone through it. I know Juan has. So I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. It was definitely well worth it. We have the opportunity to work with other people from around the state that also work in county, in county positions. And so it's really neat to see how the other counties work and their mindsets. And obviously, it's guided through Colin Powell and his philosophy on leadership. So it's definitely worth it. It was a wonderful opportunity. And thank you, Mr. Velasquez, of course, for giving me the opportunity to be part of it also. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Colin Powell sure left a good legacy with that leadership program.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Okay, anyone else wishing to come up on call to the public? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to current events. Chairman Bracker, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report at this time, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Reese?
Couple of things. Number one is I want to send out condolences to the Sines family. Mary Lou Sines passed away last week. She was really Santa Cruz County politics at its best. She was a wonderful lady. She was always very happy, smiling every time I saw her. She would always have a hug and a kiss on the cheek for me and I'm going to miss that of her. And Susie was my classmate and, you know, it's always tough when you lose a parent. And I know that the services are going to be this Friday at Sacred Heart Church with a visitation at 10:00, a rosary at 10:30 followed by the mass at 11:00. So I want to really express our deepest condolences to the Sines family and such a big loss for their family. On a brighter note, I know Sunday is Mother's Day. There's a lot of moms that work for us. I want to take this opportunity to thank the moms for all they do for their kids and even their husbands who sometimes act like children. And I see some smiling faces and, you know, I'm fortunate that I still have my mom. And I know that I want to wish all of you a very happy Mother's Day. You get to celebrate on Sunday and then again on May 10th. So you get a double celebration this month. So congratulations to your mom. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Reese. I too personally want to send out my condolences to the Sines family. Susie's a dear friend. Mary Lou was as well and we're going to miss her. A couple of other items, attended Small Counties CSA Executive Board meeting. Big fires going up north are the main issues that were going on. I don't know if they've put out any of those big fires yet, but a lot of big issues with fires up north right now, especially with the dry windy climate. Staff is currently working on budget. Thank you for all your due diligence and hard work. I personally met with Roberto Guavaro from Unisource to discuss a couple items. One key item was the power line. They're looking to run to the mine in Patagonia and we're just going to try and, and it's important that we coordinate with Unisource because it's going to be possibly running by the airport and there's many, they may need special permission from the FAA. So one other thing is I too want to send out Happy Mother's Day to our mothers. Obviously, you guys do a lot for us. My mom is also a key person in my life and still around. I thank her for all that she's done personally. And my wonderful wife, I thank her. And all you mothers in Santa Cruz County, thank you. And that's all I have to report. We'll go ahead and move on to Manager's Report.
Good morning again. I also attended Small Counties and the Board of Directors meeting virtually at CSA. I attended a Governor's briefing on the infrastructure bill. I attended the School Superintendent's meeting to hear about the new grant that's on your agenda today. As you mentioned Supervisor Malera, we're in the middle of budget meetings, so that's, we'll take up the majority of this week and some of next week. And in regards to the NACO leadership, just so the board and the public knows, we've sent at least 10 people through that academy now. We're regularly sending three each cohort. There's a new cohort that starts on August 1st, I believe it is. And so if there's any county employees or elected officials or department heads that want to attend, Sonya will be reaching out to them to attend.
Right.
So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash and Investments, Expenditures and Revenue Reports. Good morning, Mauricio.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The General Fund has an overall balance of $19,686,638 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The Road Fund has an overall balance of $2,603,33526 with an investment amount of $815,000. Flood Control District overall balance $786,783 with an investment amount of $513,000. The Jail District has an overall balance of $3,100,000 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, $44,665,322 with an investment amount of $14,439,000 for an estimated end of the month balance of $16,245,652.
Any questions, gentlemen?
None.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to resist General and move into Flood Control.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to go to item one, Director's Project Report.
Good morning, Angie.
Good morning, Angie. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. For this month of April, unfortunately, we didn't have any rainfall, so of course we are less water than before. And as far as ATM, we do have an update. We got it late yesterday. I will be revising the report and so you guys can repost it. We will be getting an award packet either by the end of this month or the beginning of next, I'm sorry, the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And that will entail a two-week, within two weeks that they will be coming down and checking out our project sites.
Good. Congratulations.
So it is moving forward. And then item number three, Keno Springs, also have an update on that. I got it this morning. This project actually, and I didn't know, in January, we got a letter and I got it refaxed to me today. The letter states that the map will be changing. Although most of the land there is, right now, is not developed, it will become more viable. So I didn't get exactly how many lots there are, but they will, it will be more viable and that people can buy into that area. So that's a, that's a good notice for, for the landowners. Item number four, oh, StanTech Engineering on our LoMar, that it will become effective for Bensejo in June. And then item number five, also StanTech Consulting, but that's a new one. That one is actually out of the private sector. It's seven lots. It's just adjacent to the South Industrial Park. And they will be coming out of the flood zone hopefully by next, at the earliest by next March, but they're going into the review phase. So they have 90 days, so in September, their review phase will, will end for the public sector. And hopefully, all goes well and they will, by next March, they will be able to, those lots will be out. And it's about 34 acres and that's prime real estate there. It's all industrial. And I think the other ones, they're pretty much straightforward, that we're just kind of like sitting and waiting on them. And as far as the flood hazard information sheet, we had 231. 27 were from the city, eight were from the town of Patagonia, 196 were from unincorporated Santa Cruz County. We had a total of seven site reviews. They were all within Santa Cruz County. And we received 11 floodplain use permit requests. Five were from the city and six were from the Santa Cruz County unincorporated area. We didn't have any drainage reports. I did not get a report from the town of Patagonia or the city of Nogales. And all attachments are included. I will be repediifying this so that, with the update, so you guys can have a revised version. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So Keno Springs, is that going to be another map revision so that the people that are-
Yes, on the, actually, the 31st of this month, that map will become effective.
So, so what that'll do in essence is that if they want to build, they don't have to-
Get a floodplain use permit.
Well, well, besides that, they don't have to purchase flood insurance.
Exactly.
Unless they absolutely want to. Because if you get a mortgage, part of it is you have to buy flood insurance, so.
If they get it right now and they're building, or if they're constructing, they would. But if not, they wouldn't need to.
Right.
So that's all a plus. I mean, I will get the number of lots so that you will know in a, in a better capacity how many will be affected.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. Have a great day.
You too.
Bruce, any questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Juan, did you have something to report on?
Yes, sir.
You ran out of money last week, Juan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here in front of you. So first of all, I want to give kudos to Santa Cruz County for the work, very hard work that they are doing, starting with getting a grant for the Frayn Canyon. That's amazing. Very nice project that will benefit a lot of families there. Thank you very much. I'm just waiting for an invitation for the kickoff meeting. Thank you. And also, I have been in conversation with Jesus Valdez about the, some sections that are very damaged along the Hojocan Drive that are, we are close to lose the road there. Jesus Valdez is very supportive with at least one of them, which is the place where the sewer main is crossing and is the most critical there. I have a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers to, the next week, to go over and maybe getting an emergency permit from them to do something prior to the monsoon season. Hopefully, we'll, we'll not have any issues with the Army Corps of Engineers for the existing conditions, but we don't know yet. We need to wait. I explained the Army Corps of Engineers that are, I understand the rules. We are concerned for the environment there, but as well, we are concerned for the safety of people there. So we have to do something. And that's something that I put it clear to the Army Corps of Engineers and they are visiting the site to be witness of the current situation. So again, I'm hoping that they will understand that we need to do something there. In the worst case scenario, I also have a Plan B. I have a consultant who wants to, wants to do something from inside the Hojocan Drive, not encroaching into the channel to protect the, like removing the existing curb, doing some kind of sheet piling, sheet piling or something else, not encroaching into the channel in case of the Army Corps of Engineers doesn't want us to touch the channel. So, but we have to do something. That is one of the main collectors in the city that serves for when the train is crossing, so it is a critical road. On another subject, I also, I'm getting bids for the replacement of the paving on Altuson Road. As you might know, that road was damaged in 2018 after a flooding event, but damages were mainly not from surface drainage, was from underground water. Was an event that are similar to what happened on Country Club where groundwater is coming from everywhere and was, we had significant damages to the subways. Again, as soon as I have something more in concrete about getting a current cost, I will see how can we work together in a similar manner with the Hojocan Drive. So the city of Nogales started the cleaning of basins in Arroyos citywide. We started with some basins like in Monte Carlo and also the one in Alherson. But we will continue doing so. So just in anticipation to the monsoon. That's it, very much. Thank you very much. Any questions?
So Juan, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Juan. I know that we had a meeting at Public Works and I think our staff did a great job pulling together maps of who owns what, what's going on. I understand it's very critical. I drive through there when I go to my mom's house and there are portions that are getting very close to your road there that are very dangerous. Besides the core, did you have an opportunity to talk maybe to Beck or Nat Bank about funding? The bad thing about it is that the railroad is so close. The railroad, I don't know what their easement is. I think it goes to the middle of the channel, if I remember correctly, but we had that in those slides, to use that, just because I know we've, we've already started working on trying to find something. I'm glad you're looking at other options as well. Do you know when the core is going to be coming down?
They are coming two days. They will be performing a site visit with some inspectors from their site and then they will be May 12 and May 13 in Nogales.
Can you, can you make sure that Jesus is aware because I know that we, we want to support you in any way we can, see what it is that we can do to, to protect the safety and welfare. Because you have, it's critical over there, you have your, your baseball field and your soccer fields and if that road goes, that water's going to go onto those fields because it's going to be a complete flood failure. The second thing that really concerns me is the railroad tracks and the way the scouring is heading west on a few areas there that you can already see where the water has been swirling. And because of the amount of tankers that carry sulfuric acid, my concern would be that there would be a derailment of rupture, one of those. And then you get a sulfuric plume that would affect people probably a mile, mile and a half around the area. We have schools. We have Monte Carlo area, a lot of residents there. So yeah, please keep us, keep us posted because I think we need to find some type of solution to make sure that we can, we can protect not just that, but the, the train tracks from failing as well.
You are correct, Mr. Supervisor Reese. We are aware of that situation. Then the good thing is that in, on the side of Union Pacific is not as bad as on the side of Hojocan where we can even see a cavity on the road already. So it is critical.
Yeah, let us know, please.
Thank you very much.
I just personally noticed it yesterday. I rode through there in the morning and you have cones there, right?
We have cones in one of the sections, but the other section where the sewer main is crossing, we don't have anything yet, but we have, it's supposed to guard rail, but the guard rail is in the air. It's not, it's not supporting anything.
It's, it's very close.
Yeah. And in my opinion, somehow in the future, we should change that sewer main there. It's obstructing the flow and it's, has been there for a lot, a long time, but it shouldn't be in that way. So it's something that eventually will have to be, I don't know, do it under the wash or under pressure or something like that. But it is something that I requested the utility director to start thinking about it and to have at least a shovel-ready project or start working on replacing the sewer main that is right now in the air, so.
And that old Tucson Road, I've been in communication with you guys-
Thank you.
-for at least three years.
Yeah, you're right.
The more we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. So I really, really honestly think we need to work on that.
You are correct, sir. Thank you. So we'll see, the bid openings are on May 33rd. We'll see how much is it and then, this time, we hire a consultant to have a design of the road based on prior conditions and also based on the existing traffic counts on that area. So significant of the, the people, but the type of cars are trucks, so, but that's why another, that's another factor that affects the, the carrying, carrying weights of, the limits of that road. So this time, with the design of the consultant, we'll, we hope that we'll make it right and more durable than last time.
Make sure you communicate with Jesus because he did, we did our section and our section, I think one little area failed, but they made a correction and it's perfectly fine now.
And in that regard, I remember at that time, the county had the opportunity to make a thicker. At that time, they decided, the county decided to have a marsh thicker base, which was, that was the key. And we did it in, as other roads, for industrial roads, but we never think about the groundwater was something that is benefiting the side, the county side that are, they, at that time, they decided to make a thicker cross-section. Good, good move.
Well, we tried to bring you in and you guys said no, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Don't become a stranger.
No, I will be more quick than you.
Okay, I think she mentioned she didn't have a report from Patagonia. Any public comment? Okay, hearing none.
To adjourn our Flood Control District reconvene regular meeting?
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item, action item H and come back to executive session at the end. Item one, discussion possible action for authorization to fill one vacant Deputy County Attorney V position.
Move to approve and this is because of a retirement, I understand.
That's correct.
I will second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item two, discussion possible action to approve corrected reappointment of Concepcion Bracamonte as Justice of the Peace pro tempore, Judge for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Move to approve the corrected reappointment.
Thank you. I will second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item three, discussion possible action to approve modifications of intergovernmental agreement number 08-10-0042 with the United States of Justice and the United States Marshal Services for inmate housing.
Everything in order, Kim?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Okay, I'll second- Okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 4, discussion, possible action to approve intergovernmental agreement contract number CTR 059190 for Senate Bill 1847, funding from Arizona Department of Health Services in the amount of $33,000.
Move to approve. And Jennifer, you have something?
No, no, sir. Just everything's in order. This is based on population, and it's to help us fund the opioid crisis and medical marijuana.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Did we have a motion?
I moved to approve, so I don't know. I didn't hear. Did you second?
Okay, I'll second. Any, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 5, discussion, possible action to approve ESSER 3, Set Aside Statewide Recovery Funds Grant Application, number BPM 004016, with the Arizona Department of Education for the youth project in the amount of $5,868,638 for three years effective May 3rd, 2022.
Move to approve.
I will second, and congratulations again.
All right, Alfredo, now we know where the money is.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 6, discussion, possible action to repeal proclamation of a state of emergency regarding COVID-19.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion, possible action to approve application for special event license, Arizona Craft Distillery Guild 52122 in Patagonia?
Move to approve.
Second. Everything in order?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 8, discussion, possible action to approve application for fireworks display Ririco High School, 51922.
Move to approve, and-
Second.
Fire Department Sheriff's Office, good with that? Thank you.
Okay, graduation, I'm assuming, right? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Was that an aye from Bruce?
It was.
All right, Bruce. Okay, item 9, Tax Valuation Adjustments A through E?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, Approval of Minutes Stated 41322, 41922, and 42722.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 11, I move to approve demands totaling $1,158,197.30, of which $303,883.55 are from the general fund.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead and move on to item G. Pursuit 2ARS 38-43103A3, Discussion and Consultation for Legal Advice and/or Direction Regarding the County's Legal Obligation and/or Response, if any, to a Criminal Case Involving Former County Assessor Felipe Fuentes.
Move to recess and convene into executive session.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
Yes, I, I believe that it's important that the Board of Supervisors take this action. It's something we need to do to protect the integrity of the, to reestablish the integrity of the office, and also to protect the constituents for any, any losses that they may have occurred. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I personally am extremely disappointed and agree with my two colleagues. We need to try and recover public funds that have been lost. And those are my comments.
And just quickly, the public trust again, too. So that's what we're trying to do, is get the public to trust those offices again. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I believe that ends the people's business.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you.